I'm going to reply to that. And he starts wanting to talk to me.
Yeah, I hear you. And not as Facebook, whatever he is.
Well, not as I like to say.
Bruce Taylor.
I don't know. Probably got trapped.
Good evening, everybody. We are live here for our committee of the whole meeting for Monday, May 16th, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. With that, I'm going to look for a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Councilor Flowers, you're going out of order here. Everybody. You're confusing me now. Calling to question, everybody in favor? And now I'll look for adoption of the minutes. Geez, you guys are really confusing me. Councilor Reed.
Just to shake it up a bit, yeah, I'll move the minutes as presented for adoption.
Calling that to question, everybody in favor? And that is unanimously voted in. So we are going to go to our first delegation, which I would like to call up Cochrane Tourism. Joanne O'Terick as the Executive Director of Cochrane Tourism Association to the podium to present all the information about the great things happening with tourism in our community. Good evening, Joanne.
Thank you, Marty. Well, it's been a long time, hasn't it? Good evening. Now, Deputy Mayor Fideko, Mayor, Councilors, Administration. It's always, it's been great to keep you up to date on our progress through regular reports, but it's always better in person, isn't it? So it's nice to be back. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about the visitor economy. A big part of what we do here in, with Cochrane Tourism is developing the visitor economy. I've sent you a lot of information about this, but really I wanted to talk about the transformation of Cochrane Tourism and how we have transformed from a destination development organization to actually a destination management organization. And this is interesting that Travel Alberta has just done this in the past year. And in our joint tourism strategy that we developed in 2018, we actually, taking on the implementation of that tourism strategy, we actually became that destination development organization to build the products and create a bigger tourism sector. We really have two audiences in Cochrane. One is visitors, mostly the visitors who are coming here are visiting family and friends, people who come to attend festivals. We also have visitors that come from Calgary, so that regional travel. But we also have a huge internal audience, and those are the many new people that have moved here, and they are looking to play in their backyards, and they can become our ambassadors. So the sectors, we have most of these in Cochrane. And as part of the town's 10-year business development strategy, tourism in Cochrane is a key strategy. And in partnership with Cochrane Tourism, the goal is to make it one of the leading sectors here. Why? Because visitor economy is very important. The visitor economy supports more than just your typical tourism sector. There are the direct ones, of course, which are very apparent, but then there's the indirect supply that comes from the tourism sectors, and they rely on food wholesalers for the restaurants, there's utilities to run their businesses, and that's the entire supply chain. Employment in Cochrane is the induced impact, and that is where the wages that are earned in Cochrane are spent in the economy. So for the visitor spending, if a family stops in Cochrane, stops for gas and fills up, they spend about $72. And our goal is to entice them to stay longer. In order to do that, we need four to six hours of activities for them to even consider coming to Cochrane on a trip. So over the last two years, Cochrane Tourism has developed new tourism products by collaborating with the businesses and other organizations to expand the tourism sector and add additional revenue to the businesses in Cochrane through the Tourism Mentorship Program. This aligns with the main strategy of the town plan, which is to proactively strengthen relationships with existing businesses groups and their organizations. This program will be one of the first programs that will run out of the newly developed Innovation Centre. The other thing that tourism does is it creates a multiplier effect, and that's the second benefit of tourism. As you can see, when a visitor spends $5 on an ice cream cone, that $5 multiplies between eight and 15 times in the community, in the economy, and so a $5 ice cream can turn into a $50 economic impact. That doesn't sound like a whole lot, but if you have 10,000 ice creams, right, that's $50,000. If your family stays overnight, if 10,000 families stay overnight, that's almost $3 million in the visitor economy. That can have a huge impact for Cochrane and area. So I gave you some economic stats, and this was, of course, pre-COVID. And this is to assist in understanding the economic drivers if tourism was to become one of the leading industries here in Cochrane. The benefits of that to the community are when people come to visit, many of them decide to come and live here. They don't come to live here unless they visit first. Visitors spend money at our retail stores, our restaurants, our leisure facilities, that's boosting their viability, and that in turn provides the locals the opportunity to have these amenities to enjoy. We see pride in the residents who talk about living here, and Cochrane is developing, Cochrane Tourism in partnership with Visitor Center is developing an ambassador program because we see that people love Cochrane and they want to share, that Cochrane is a great place to be, and we have created a list of over 30 locals that will be part of this new program that we'll be launching this year. As with anything, there are always challenges, and like the roads in Cochrane at the moment, tourism development has some challenges. But what are we going, what do we have going for us here in Cochrane? One of the biggest things in Cochrane is our location, located between Calgary and the national parks. This, partly because of the efforts of Cochrane Tourism over the last four years, has helped to establish Cochrane as a new, as the newest travel corridor for Travel Alberta. So the travel corridors are Banff, Jasper, Lake Louise, Medicine Hat, Lethbridge, Drumheller, and now Cochrane will be one of those tourism corridors. So where did it all start? Like you, four and a half years ago, we met. We wrote a joint tourism strategy in partnership with Business Development, and that tourism strategy was endorsed by Town Council. The tourism brand, our programs, our content development have all been very successful, gaining recognition by the province and the federal government through funding support to achieve these milestones. This funding has only been possible because of the operational funding provided by the town of Cochrane, allowing us to leverage that investment to build these programs. Each year, like Council, the Tourism Board reviews the strategic plan, identifying the goals and objectives that have been completed, and updating those priorities to fit with the development of the tourism sector and align with our mission and vision statement. Through these priorities, over the past two years, tourism, sorry, these are our four priorities, and one of them has been researching the river in Cochrane, potentially to grow the visitor economy with benefits to the community. By engaging within the community, we determine that the majority of locals like the potential of this project and other factors are that the Cochrane River Users Alliance, the new vision for Rocky View County with tourism, the recreational study completed by the Tourism Industry Association of Alberta and the Government of Alberta have kept the development of the river strategy on the top priorities for the Cochrane Tourism Association. So what is successful rural tourism? To make tourism one of the lead industries here, it needs to be an integral part of the development policies, and planning is essential. In order to achieve our vision, which is to inspire the world to visit Cochrane by providing the must-see and must-experience tourism products, together we must support the vision, the mission of Cochrane, which is to increase the economic impact of tourism in Cochrane by supporting the creation of these products. Building tourism is a leading, it could be a leading industry in Cochrane, and that provides an alternative source of revenue and growth opportunities for our businesses without the reliance on town growth. Recognizing there are no decisions being made tonight at the Committee of the Whole, Cochrane Tourism has two requests for Council tonight. Two years ago, we were in discussions to develop a sustainable tourism funding model. Actually... I would like to provide Council and Administration with what this could look like. Currently, we are funded by the town's annual operational grant. Cochrane Lake Banff could create a fee for accommodations and businesses to provide what we could call a tourism development fee. As I said, we have been in discussions with this over the last two years ago, then COVID happened, everything changed, and so I'd like to bring this back to the table. As part of being an innovative community, tourism has led the rural development in Alberta with many other destination marketing organizations coming to us to ask us how we have done, how we have got to where we are today. This would be another innovative step to show the province the innovative community that Cochrane is today. The other request that I would like to present to Council is an annual support letter for the annual priorities outlined in the Joint Tourism Strategy. In order for tourism to be able to access additional funding to support the programs and projects to achieve the goals and objectives outlined in our Joint Tourism Strategy, municipal support is required. This was apparent in recent feedback from the Community Facility Enhancement Program Grant, where we applied for funding for the basic, the next steps in the River Wave Strategy. When I asked, we did not receive that grant, it was $497,000. When I asked for feedback on the grant, we had letters of support from the province and the federal government, but we did not have a letter of support from the municipality. And so that was the number one reason why they couldn't support our grant application. So this is an important step if we are going to continue to build products in Cochrane to create the vision, mission statement that we have in the tourism sector. So I know we don't have a lot of time tonight, so I just wanted to present some of that information to you. As I said, I sent you some of our quarterly reports on what we've been up to. We've had lots of successes, our new app just dropped, we've had people out scavenger hunting this weekend, and I do believe that the visitor economy is very important for our community and for business development and the role in their strategy, and so I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for the information. As a member of the Advisory Board for Cochrane Tourism, it's always great to be updated on all the good work that you guys do, and obviously Council supports the fact that we all live in a fantastic community and we all love where we live, and I don't think any of us are going to disagree on some of those points. But I will, I will turn it over to Council right now for any questions that they may have about your presentation. Councilor Reed.
Thanks for the presentation. We're going to have access to it on our website, is it on our portal? Okay. Just a couple of questions. I was trying to understand the transformation from destination development to what, what was it you said?
So destination marketing is what the Tourism Association was prior to 2017. So their main goal was to market Cochrane, come to Cochrane through advertising, paid campaigns. In 2018, with a joint tourism strategy, part of the new strategy was to create tourism products so that we could attract people to come to Cochrane, and that is the transformation to a destination development organization. And a destination, so it becomes a management organization rather than just a marketing organization.
Okay, great, thanks for clarification. The other question I had was the multiplier effect. Is that, is that unique to Cochrane or is that just a formula used for tourism everywhere?
That is an international standard for tourism, that $1 in the community multiplies between eight and 15 times, depending on how much tourism is there.
Okay, so it's not unique to Cochrane, it's just an international formula?
Not, not unique to Cochrane, something that we can certainly build on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Flowers?
Thank you for your presentation, very interesting, and it's always been great watching all the work that you guys have been doing. Could you explain the potential funding model again? I didn't quite understand. Has any of this money been collected, or is this what you would like to collect?
Not, so currently our funding comes from a voluntary program in the province called the Destination Marketing Fund. So hotels have the opportunity to pay into a destination marketing fund, and that money then comes to a DMO like Cochrane Tourism. So this started in 2007, and at that time, there were two hotels that paid into the Destination Marketing Fund, that was the Rocky View Hotel and the Days Inn. The Ramada has their own Destination Marketing Fund called Destination West, and so they were always a separate entity, and we didn't have an agreement with them on a percentage basis for rooms, but they did provide some funding in some years for the Tourism Association. But hotels can choose in Alberta to enter the program or not enter the program, and it's signed on an annual agreement. And so currently, we have, the Suprate is the only hotel in Cochrane that pays into the Destination Marketing Fund. We did have an agreement in place with the Ramada because they have seen over the last four years the strength of what we've done here in Cochrane, and they were ready to support us and actually join the Cochrane DMF, so that those funds that were collected specifically in Cochrane would stay in Cochrane, not pooled in their normal platform. Unfortunately, as you know, the Ramada is no longer at the moment, and so that would be approximately $60,000 a year that we would have received from them through the 3% levy through the Destination Marketing Fund. And so in Banff, one of the, what they did as a, as a community, because they are based on tourism, is they developed a program where it's a tourism investment fee in every business and every hotel pays into it, and their budget is $10 million a year. And that goes to Banff Lake Louise Tourism through the town of Banff. And so this is just an option for Cochrane if tourism is something that they want to create, that you want to create as a leading industry here in Cochrane. This is one of the funding models that can happen through, not a municipal, not through the municipality act, through an independent fee that can be developed, and I'm just suggesting that it be a tourism development fee, that could be what we call it, and all accommodations would pay into it. As you can see, we have almost 60 Airbnbs in town, we have 10 bed and breakfasts in town, we have five hotels, four hotels, and a potential for a new one that is supposed, might be developing in the Greystone area. And so as you can see, this is at 50% occupancy, that is from the visitor economy, not from taxpayer dollars, that's from people who are visiting here, staying at the hotels, that 3% is collected, and it can be used to develop the tourism sector. The other possibility is having all business pay into the tourism sector fee because everybody benefits. With the multiplier effect, visitors buy things at, at the retail stores, or let's say McKay's, then McKay's needs to buy more supplies to make ice cream, and then their staff, you know, is hired to do that, and then their staff go out and spend money in the community, they also need to hire accountants and lawyers, and then people come to visit, and real estate agents are employed because people need to buy houses. So you can see how that visitor economy is important to the entire sector.
Now I understand it, thank you.
Does it make sense?
Yes.
And I threw this at you because I was working on it this afternoon, it was like, okay, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put it out there. We were talking about this, as I said, a few years ago before COVID with administration, and so this, this is something that could happen in Cochrane if Council and Administration feel it's important.
Thank you. Two other questions if I could. The River Park, it's been very controversial and a lot of stuff in the media and the public about it. So your plan, when you put in the grant, was to move forward with it, or what was the grant exactly for?
So the grant was to do, if you, and I know that you have the feasibility study, we, the feasibility study in order to move that forward had some showstoppers, right? Which are environmental, which are all the things that were discussed as part of the, the reason people were talking about it is it wasn't moving forward, but in order to even look at moving it forward, you need to do the environmental assessments, you need to do the geotechnical assessments on the sediment, there needs to be water studies done, all of that needs to be done. And so in June, well, in May, before, before all the controversy happened with the River Wave and the election, we applied for a grant because we were able to secure funding, matching funds through the University of Ottawa, they were doing a project on river design, and so we were able to leverage that to apply for the grant, to look at these first stages of the environment and all the things that need to happen to see whether it's even, the next step, to see whether it's possible. Yes, I agree that it became a little controversial. And I will tell you how that happened. I didn't, I could not understand how people had access to our feasibility study because it was a public doc, it was not a public document, it was a document that was created for tourism, and if you read the study, it was created in a bigger vision. So when we, when we selected that location for the feasibility study, there was a bigger vision that was going on with the 15 acres next to the river, next to that spot in the river. We were in discussions with town and other organizations like the farmers' market and the Bike Cochrane and, who else was involved with that? Oh, and Rotary, to create that as a, as a hub for an indoor-outdoor farmers' market, to have cultivate like a passive solar greenhouse in there. And so we had to select some place out of the five locations for the feasibility to be developed. The feasibility study became public because it was actually on the, on the town's website. And so people got access to it and didn't understand that it was a process, the very first step to see if this was something we could do. And unfortunately, they didn't come and ask me any questions. And it got out in the media. Truthfully, I think it still is a viable project because the community has, has spoken, and they've said that they are interested in river access and in getting on the river, and potentially this as a project, it's a $50 billion industry, and yes, Cochrane could be, that could put us on the map if we really wanted to have tourism here. And, and so the controversy, as I said, was personally, it was part of an election agenda for potential candidates.
It was unfortunate that people made statements that it was bad for the environment without us having the information because we were all curious about what the impacts would be on the environment.
And that is exactly why we applied for the next grant, to be able to understand what that would look like. Because we applied for that grant before everything else, I'll say, blew up, for a better word. But during that time, we did public engagement, right? And the silent majority, if you look at what people were asking for, they were asking for access to the river, they were asking for washrooms next to the river, they're asking for ways to play on the river. We have one access point in Cochrane, Riverfront Park, and if you're a kayaker, you cannot come back upriver. I don't care how good you are. And, and so there is a lot of opportunity, and with the, with the Cochrane or the Calgary River Users Alliance coming and expanding what they did in Calgary, so they created a river strategy in Calgary for the city of Calgary, and what they did was they created access points so that people could get on and off the river. And if you look on a hot summer day, how many people are on the river in Calgary? Thousands. So it is definitely an asset. And the crowd, so what Calgary River Users Alliance is doing is they are expanding into the Bow River Management Area, and their number one priority is Ghost Dam to Bear's Paw, and we're right in the middle. And these are 19 organizations that have made headway in creating great access for the community of Calgary, and so they could help us to create wonderful access for the community of Cochrane and visitors who come here.
Okay, so you're still working on that project?
At the moment, it is a priority on the Cochrane Tourism Strategic Plan, but that will depend on whether Council supports this strategy or not.
Okay, thank you. And my last question was, I took a tourism workshop last spring, and they said there's a high percentage of people looking for indigenous experiences when they come out to communities. I forget what the percentage was, but it was really high. Have you looked at that, or have you thought about partnerships or anything?
Oh, absolutely. So it is on the tourism strategies as well, is the Indigenous Tourism Development. We were at the Indigenous Talking Circle together. Um we were at the Indigenous Talking Circle together. Um I am in discussions with Rotary to help with product development in the Innu Indigenous Centre if that does uh develop into that. We have worked with um uh Painted Warrior, which is a export-ready product that is just north of us in Cremona. There is um Mohican Trails and uh is Brenda, oh, I forget her name, Holder, and um she has moved her business just north of Cochrane as well. And she is also the president of the um Alberta Tourism Associate or Indigenous Tourism of Alberta. So we have been in discussion, but those conversations take a long time because it's and with all the other things that are on the tourism plate at the moment, um it is part of the strategy. But it's not one of the top priorities at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Counselor Wilson?
Thank you, thanks for the presentation. Uh I was looking through the uh proposed um hotel business, Airbnb, bed and breakfast tax and and if I understood the presentation, it was to help uh the organization go from an advocacy organization to a management organization? If I have that terminology right, or I might have been picking different things in the presentation.
Just call it a DMO.
Okay. Okay, really what I'm asking, what what's the, i- if we were to implement the new funding, what's the goal for Cochrane Tourism as as we grow? What's uh what would the new funding enable us to do?
Well, by having funding for the Tourism Association, we at the moment, we kind of work on a shoestring budget. Um the things that are developed, we like for like what we've created is the Tourism Mentorship Program where we have become a incubator for tourism development by adding a revenue stream for local businesses. To either expand what they're doing in the tourism sector or to help them to get into the tourism sector. And so I can give you an example of that, this this year we had a um an educational tour company that of course with COVID, their business had to completely shift. So they looked into the tourism sector, they looked at the craft breweries and the distilleries that were happening and they wanted to provide some extra income for those businesses, so they created a tour, uh three tours actually, to be able to take people to those through a a um in a VIP experience. So by creating those products, tourism is developing more activities, reasons for people to come to Cochrane. So supporting those kinds of programs, having uh program facilitators, business development assistants to be able to help with that is key for that because it has mentorship that goes along with those programs. Also, every time that we want to apply for a project, we have to pull up for money. So right now, we're we've got money, an application into Travel Alberta for content development. We have money uh applications into the Tourism Relief Fund to help e- extend the tourism relief or mentorship program to get into the Innovation Centre. So if we had a sustainable funding model, all of these programs would run just as we would know that we could run them every year and they would be sustainable for our community.
Excellent, uh thank you, that was my only question, thanks.
Okay. Mayor Jono?
Yeah, thank you, a couple of points. And Counselor Flowers brought this up, I wasn't gonna talk about the River Wave Park tonight. Um for many of the reasons you've already highlighted. Um but I just think it's clear, or I think we should make it clear to the public and to the media uh if they're listening, wherever the cameras are pointed right now, um that the River Wave Park is not a project Cochrane Tourism pursuing, is pursuing at this moment.
That that's, sorry.
But I and I'll go on, that that it is a river access strategy that you're pursuing as a priority. And where that leads, we don't know, but that priority is different from the River Wave Park.
That is correct. And and we we saw that um that need when we went to the public. The public is looking for access and so, well, what does that, what does that mean? How how do we give them that? W- with anything, you need to create a strategy. And looking at what Calgary did, and yes, I know we're small compared to Calgary, but I dream big. So let's make it big, right? And so a river strategy, developing a ri- river strategy can help with all kinds of things, not only for visitors, but people who live here. Where can you go to the bathroom along the river at the moment? Like it's, uh y- y- okay, you need to plan that if you've got little kids. Where do the trails go, right? If I'm standing at Riverfront Park, where can I go and how can I get there, right? And so um if I want to get on the river, where can I get off the river? Right now, um it's not safe to get on and off the river in places. And people are doing it and that is not okay either. And that's why part of the river strategy is educating people on getting on and off the river in a po- in a safe way and understanding when the river is unsafe to be there. All of that is part of an actual development of a river strategy. Helping the town to recognize that these points as we develop places along the river, um like at uh where the Griffin Barn is and around the corner if they build another bridge for Glimbow Ranch, to make sure there's access to get in and on and off the river, that's what a river strategy is. And so, yes, we have, we have taken and and the river strategy at some could point could be to create something like a wave park. But that's got lots of steps to it and that is sometime in the future. Right now, we could start this immediately with the help of those other organizations who want to do that. And that is something that community said that they wanted.
And could dovetail into Parks and Rec and the Parks Committee?
Absolutely.
Looking at the trail and the gap analysis and parks in general and how they integrate with the river.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Um and just the last thing I'll say about the River Wave Park is that it also, to be crystal clear to those who may be listening, it is not a town project.
That is correct.
Not a town project and it's not something that we're pursuing at this time either.
Correct.
Okay, uh onto your presentation. I I have been a longtime advocate of your uh tourism development fee. Uh thank you for bringing it forward tonight. Um I believe we were talking about it in a budget about three-ish years ago, prior to COVID, as you've outlined in your report. But uh um I see this as a way to, uh and Counselor Wilson, you touched on this, that this would take uh Cochrane Tourism out of the fundraising um work. So and I understand that you're like most um groups as they're fledgling and I guess of that and I would call Cochrane Tourism a fledgling partnership because you're often, most often, I think, out there trying to raise funds rather than focus on tourism development. Um I'd like to see that switch. So there's long-term sustainable funding, just like we as a municipality look to the province for. We can plan in advance, you can put programs in it in long-term, knowing you're gonna have a funding model um out into the future, so um and not borne by the taxpayer. So I see this as a win-win. Um and actually, uh maybe a way that we could potentially cut a a budget item from our uh annual budget and put it on to those that are actually using it. So um whether we land on something exactly like this or something similar, I think this is something we need to pursue further and uh get after it. Um and I, so thank you for bringing it forward again and putting it on our table. Um the second request you had was around a letter of support. Um I would ask, are you looking for, and it wasn't clear in your presentation tonight, I think it was in the email you sent. But I just wanted to be clear in what type of support letter are you looking for? Generic in support of Cochrane Tourism or issue driven in specific to the River Wave access?
So
Or river, sorry. Punch me in the face, right in the lips, River Access Strategy, there we go.
So we have um five priorities this year. And every year, as council does, the Tourism Board creates priorities. And so when those priors are created on an annual basis, um that is what we're looking for, for a support letter saying we're looking for the, these are, these are the five priorities that the Tourism Association is working on this year. Their content development, they're developing the Explore Cochrane Platform, they are potentially doing a
Got it.
River strategy, the Tourism Mentorship Program, those are our priorities. And that is what we're looking for a support letter for on an annual basis. So that when we, when we have the opportunity, when funding comes up, because there is grant funding out there right now and lots of it, if we don't have a letter of support saying the town supports these priorities, these priorities are then what we're applying for funding for, that, that is, that's what I'm asking for.
So I see that more of an endorsement maybe from council and then as you apply for grants, then that would give uh myself or council to uh the ability to sign a support letter as we go? Is that kind of how you see it?
Yeah.
Kind of how I'm
Well, and and that is a, that is something that can be in discussion, I didn't think we've asked for that in the past or but I see what happened without it. And and so it's a lot of work to go through those applications.
Well, I I appreciate the uh the checkpoint, that yes, we're on the right track. Council officially endorses the priorities of Cochrane Tourism at a meeting such as this or at a formal, regular council meeting. Um thank you, just getting the the eyeball from legislation or
Yeah, not, not here.
The eyeball.
We're just talking tonight.
Yeah, no, I I get that, but uh that's how I see the process. And then we agree, we disagree, whatever we, there's direction set, agreed upon, and then endorsement or the support letters can flow out of that. Okay, thank you for your clarity on that and thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, thank you. I uh am not gonna talk about any activities on the river. But actually, in all seriousness though, um I did wanna pass on some kudos to your organization. I was speaking with a friend of mine who's a Economic Development Officer in Nova Scotia. And she, when she learned where I was from, she wanted to pass on her congratulations because uh Cochrane Tourism is kind of a best-in-class case study that they've been looking at. And so it was really great, um you know, sometimes we just get so focused in what we're doing here in town that um it's just nice to hear that we're also being looked at from, you know, around the country as as kind of leading and finding different ways to look at things. So I just wanted to pass on
Thank you.
Those kudos that kind of came my way last month, so thank you very much. Um and I also, um well, I I I'm gonna bring it up. Um I know that the uh the conversation, um you know, it raised some waves. And maybe that didn't in the most proactive way that we wanted it to do, but what it really did though is like in order to like make changes and find new ways of doing things, we need to think outside the box. And so I think that was really the win and perhaps I think the greatest win out of it was that we did start to get that clear understanding from our residents about how important having river access, you know, really is. Cause my family is one of those ones that, you know, we we make do and scramble down banks and hope we don't miss the takeout point. Um and it is really important, um the river and the river access piece. And so I think if if we were able to kind of raise the profile of that and that starts to be what our conversation about, I think it's a, it's a very valuable exercise to have landed there. Um also additionally, um one of the key learnings through that entire process is that um when we have these conversations, um it's really important that we're working together a- as partner stakeholders because often people think, you know, the municipality is everything. And of course, we're not, municipality is one stakeholder, yeah, kind of in the broader community. And so it's very much about what uh the chamber does and tourism does and our sports groups do and and all of the ways that our community comes together. So I think it is really important, as you say, that we're making sure that as our our projects kind of get to alignment and if we're looking at taking them to, if they have that community support, to taking them to the next level, that we're working together. Um and also so that other levels of government and funders know that we're all on the same page. Cause nobody wants to invest in something that's not gonna get anywhere. Um so it's kind of been my learnings, uh kind of through the the energy you've created in the community recently, um certainly through the, through the last year. Um and I do appreciate, again, um coming up with another way of looking at how do we provide you with funding? And also the conversation about the need for you to have sustainable funding. Um if you're spending fifty percent of your fundraising or however much time you're spending fundraising, that's time that you're not spend doing and accomplishing things that we actually do need and want out of our tourism. And and you've highlighted with your numbers tonight, um the value that having a healthy tourism sector really does bring to our community, both from an economic standpoint, but also in a way of developing the things, more of the things that we want to do um ourselves as residents. So I really appreciate that that change in thinking and and the approach that, yeah, we need to kind of get you at a more sustainable point, how do we do that? Um and I have some various questions around here from a first look philosophy standpoint. I can certainly support the idea that um those businesses that are benefiting directly from the overnight stay would could be mandated to kind of participate at a, at a level. Um not sure where I would sit on like brick and mortars and other businesses that aren't necessarily directly benefiting from tourism. But I appreciate the start of the conversation. And so those are kind of my thoughts right now, any response to that?
Sure, um so when you talk about the accommodations, um in in a community like the hotels and the bed and breakfast, and they do bring in a a huge amount of that from uh the visitor economy. But their question is also, if you're going to um look at that, their their question is usually, well, what about everybody else? Because everybody benefits when people stay in the hotels, restaurants, like everybody benefits in the community. And that because of all of this stuff that I talked about tonight. So it has to be a bigger picture for the support. That's why there should be a business component to it.
Okay, I hear that, I'm musing on the whole concept, but I appreciate that lens to it, thank you.
Counselor Reed?
Yeah, a couple of questions, I I admit I was confused earlier about when you spoke about the river access and and the kind of leap of faith from people wanting access to the river to a wave park. But I I think I understand that now, thanks to the mayor's clarity, and it might be something that the tourism wants to go forward and I make that clear to to all those involved. Is it possible to get access there or ac- access to the river access a plan, the terms of the details? Will we get access to that, just out of curiosity?
Will the town, well, it's not, it's not, it's not a prior, it's it's on our priorities, but there's no money for it at the moment.
Oh, okay, okay. And how much money and resources have been put into the wave park to date, do you know?
Seventeen thousand dollars.
Okay. And then the last question I had was on the tourism development fee. So it, if I understand, the the point of that is, would it be, you're looking at the town to make that mandatory on all businesses and hotels? Or certain businesses and all hotels?
Um it is a concept where if we follow the concept of Banff, it's all businesses and all hotels. It's 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 a concept, it's an idea and an option.
Okay, yeah, I I'm interested in learning more about it. Um and is this document handed up today, is that as of today, is that like, is that, that's what this document was prepared for, for this meeting? It's not dated, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, it was, I did it this afternoon. As as a so you could see that this is a potential, right? This is a potential from other sources that could fund tourism and business development to make tourism a leading industry here in Cochrane, which is part of both of our strategies.
Now, I guess what I was trying to suggest is if it was coming forward as something that council was to approve, I would like to see some background definitions about what it is, what other communities are doing other than Banff, which is not a really good comparative. Although I appreciate your, and I respect your opinion, and then what it actually flushes out to be, right?
Absolutely.
Like you'd get the chamber on side, I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, in terms of background, if this just showed up, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't personally be comfortable in supporting it as it is. But if you came with a little bit more information, uh it'd be worth considering, right?
For sure. And on the other side, this was a community of the whole, well, I had ten minutes.
Agreed, I'm just suggesting.
I wanted to throw something at you to say, look what it could be as an option.
Yeah, fair enough, I'm just saying, next time, if again, if you, you know, all due respect, if you wish to bring it back and you were looking for support, bring it back as a packet of information.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Nagel?
Yeah, thanks so much for your presentation and for joining us this evening. Um my question is, if we were raising hundreds of thousands of dollars through this new tax, uh what would be the primary benefit of giving it to Cochrane Tourism, uh the Cochrane Tourism Association as opposed to just putting it into our Economic Development Department?
We are a separate organization, um that is what we've been doing for the last ten, twelve years, thank you. It's been a long day, um that's what we've been doing for the last twelve years. Uh to develop the tourism sector here, in the last four years, we have jointly done a strategy on that. Um the difference between having an external organization versus an internal organization. Um, the difference between having an external organization versus an internal organization. That's, that's a research project. There are organizations or different communities that have moved tourism in-house. There are organizations that continue to work with an external organization. Um, so it would be up to the town to decide whether they wanted to keep those internally and not fund the tourism association and then create your own department for tourism versus funding an external organization.
Um, so put another way, is there anything your external organization does that the municipal government would not be able to do?
There are funding, there are funding, uh, projects that we are allowed to, uh, fund, uh, apply for that municipalities cannot.
And is, so how, how much of our funding is required in order for you to leverage those funding opportunities?
Currently?
Like, like, would you need this money, uh, from the municipal government in order to apply for those funding opportunities?
The one that you have in front of you? Yes, when big projects come up, um, there are always, there are, for the last two years, most of the tourism funding has been, uh, grants, but majority of them are matching. So you have to put up fifty percent for any grant. Travel Alberta has always been fifty percent. For the last two years, it has been, uh, total grant funding because they are not funding the international travel right now. And so it has come into the, into the small DMOs. But normally, all of those things are fifty percent grant funding or matching funds. So you need money to be able to get money.
Are those done on an annual basis? Is that something that could be done through a regular budgeting process in November?
Yes. Yes, they are on an annual basis. Travel Alberta comes out annually, uh, provincial government comes out annually. Same as municipality from, uh, uh, April to March timeframe. All that money has to be spent in that timeframe. We then report on it. Uh, we were able to apply for the CARES grant, which was for the tourism mentorship program. It was a two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar project. We had to come up with a hundred and seventeen of that. A hundred and seventeen came in from the grant.
Okay. Thanks.
Welcome.
Counsel McFadden?
Yeah, just kind of following on kind of more of the operational questions. I know it's been a while. And again, to be fair, you did have ten minutes to kinda give us sort of a fresh round where you're going. Um, can you remind me though, and I, I apologize for not keeping on this, what's your current operational budget? And, and then I really do apologize. Also, what was the last amount of grant that the municipality contributed?
Okay, so the question was, what is our current operation?
Your current operational budget, yeah.
It's in flux at the moment.
Sure.
Because I'm waiting on grant applications. Um, currently, our budget is, we received a hundred thousand dollars this year from the town of Cochrane. Um, we had, uh, okay, I don't have these numbers off the top of my head, but just, I'm gonna just kinda rattle them off. Um, we had the balance of our CARES grant, which ran till March, so that was twelve thousand dollars. Uh, we received twenty thousand dollars from Travel Alberta for an operational grant, um, through COVID. We have twenty-five thousand dollars from the Cochrane Destination Marketing Fund this year. And we have received, um, approximately twenty-five thousand dollars from our partnership program this year. So. Did you add that up as I was talking?
I wasn't, no. But let me come at it another. Forty-two. Uh, let me come at it maybe another way. So, um, can you, so your base cost is, um, your, your, your staffing operational costs, which is, I understand, you are the only.
Correct.
Your team of three, of me, myself and I?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And so there's, you know, one staff, a highly dedicated group of volunteers contributing and some operational overhead. And so that's kind of your core operational budget.
Correct.
And so that's what, a hundred grand?
Uh, operationally, our, our operations is about eighty-five thousand.
Okay. And then, then the other ones are kind of your project grants that come onto that. And so what you're, you're asking for is, you know, so even if it was just, okay, so total potential funding, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And so what you're saying is, this would be, allow you to build up in your operational capacity and also take some of the time away from your current operations and fundraising, so you can start focusing on more of the, um, destination development projects and starting to actually deliver products that the community can actually see. And so that would be what, like a three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar operational budget, you'd be able to build capacity and start focusing on more projects and less on fundraising and kind of a case by case scramble on provincial priorities.
Yeah, it, 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 it could look at many different things. Um, so for instance, in, in Vernon, um, the, 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 the visitor center is run not by the town, right? Uh, so it's contracted out. So though it, 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 there's a bigger picture to all of this. And the conversa, I'd love to continue the conversation and that's why I'm, I'm excited that you're asking questions cause I'd love to be able to continue the conversation with council administration on what that could look like. Could, could we, could we run the visitor center as part of Cochrane Tourism? Could we have those people as then staff to not only run the visitor center, but then to run our, uh, the ambassador program and to be a business development person for us, for the tourism mentorship program that's going to run out of the informa, out of the center, right? So the, the, the picture could be anything that you, that we could create. This is just the beginning of the concept of it. And to create a susta, a sustainable funding model, that will help us to, yes, not have to, yes, we're still gonna have to write grants to do projects, but we will be able to plan for those projects. Not like we're right now where we're going. Okay, we gotta wait till July to get money from Travel Alberta or from Tourism Relief or before we can bring in our contractors, hire facilitators and do all that. It's, and we're like no other, we're like all the other organizations out there right now. But I think that this shows value in what we can provide to the community of Cochrane with our visitor economy and, and how it can help us to have revenue without growth.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm certainly open to the conversation and finding new ways of doing things. And as the mayor had kind of hinted about, if, you know, not only like building capacity for tourism within the org, within the community, but also, you know, are there opportunities where it makes more sense for tourism to deliver something that maybe the municipality is doing right now? And that could, you know, help us save on the municipal budget on that side. So, and yeah, lots of conversations and thank you very much for kind of bringing some new ideas to the table. And, and it's great kind of to be coming out of this COVID stage where we can get back to start looking ahead again. Thank you very much for your update and thank you to your volunteers that never stop pushing.
Thanks for the information. Now I get to have a couple of moments to talk and, uh, I'm grateful for the mayor to bring up some of those points because before my phone blows up and we end up on the front page of social media tomorrow again, I think we're, we're all good. I think it was made very clear about, uh, about where council lies with the Riverway project. Um, I did wanna bring up something else that seems to be floating around the community with certain individuals is about the DMF. Um, people talk about the DMF and about how, you know, we should be taking these funds and really directing them to pay for, I don't even know, utilities or other resources around town. But really what they're missing is that the DMF is optional, right? It has never been a mandatory program within our community. So until that becomes a mandatory program, all their comments about, hey, we're missing the boat on using that funding, that funding has never been a mandatory deal, right?
Correct. And in the province of Alberta, it is, it is voluntary. In the province of B C, it is mandatory. In the province of Ontario, it is mandatory. And so they, and that is recent in the province of Ontario. Um, B C, if, if you, if you travel in B C, every small community has amazing tourism assets. They have beautiful banners up, they have museums to visit. Uh, they, they are a destination management organization who has done a great job of promoting the province because tourism is really important to the province. It's a, it's a huge economic driver. And Alberta, with the switch from, of Travel Alberta now taking on that development role, they are looking at other ways to build tourism in the province. And, um, to come back to your question about the DMF, uh, yes, it is, is totally voluntary and it's on an annual basis. So one hotel may pay into it one year and then they may change ownership and then they may not pay into it the next year because they don't see the value in it. Um, and that becomes relationship building again because they have to understand what we do and why, why it's important to the community. But the province is not going to make it mandatory. Um, if that's something that the council and administration feel that tourism should be a leading industry in Cochrane, then this is an option for us to be able to do that.
Perfect. Thank you for clarifying and I hope that gets out to the rest of Cochrane that this is exactly what it is that we need to be put out there. Not people just talking about what they kind of know when it comes to a provincial jurisdiction mandating or not. Um, that clears that up. Um, the one thing that I did wanna talk about was I am, I'm interested in the whole, um, TDF and, and I guess maybe that conversation with, uh, other businesses that might be so, you know, they would also support it just because I, I do agree that there is an element, and we all know this from even an economic development standpoint. If, if I don't wanna stay in Cochrane this weekend and I drive my car into Calgary, uh, I might have to get groceries in Calgary. I may fill up my car in Calgary. I may decide to shop in Calgary and that again takes all dollars out of our community. And so I think that is a very interesting conversation, not just from a tourism aspect, but also from an economic development standpoint about how we wanna keep people here. And, you know, when we talk about supporting heavy rail and, and that whole project, um, we don't wanna be missing the boat in my eyes on tourism and, and projects of how to, how to get people to, to come here. Um, I think that would be a really, really sad point if we end up pursuing a project and we're not talking about pairing tourism along with that. Um, I also appreciate the fact that in your, in your funding here, um, a big portion of it is, is from the Ramada Hotel, which is, I unfortunately, and you know, my, uh, you know, all of council feels for the owners that have, you know, have lost, uh, obviously income on their own, but that's a huge loss. And even if we look at from the tourism potential funding model, it's a huge loss of income. And so I think in some cases, this maybe provides us an opportunity as council. Um, and I'd certainly turn it over to administration at some point to comment that maybe this is an opportunity to really have that discussion going forward because, um, I, obviously as the Ramada is planning to rebuild, we, we know they're coming on. We know that there's going to be possibly, you know, a boutique hotel coming to the Greystone area. You know, what does this overall look like as time goes on? And then, you know, I think going back to Counsel Nagel's point, like, what do we do with all these funds and, and what is our best strategy going forward? And I think there's a lot of conversation that, you know, could be had, will be had, and it's certainly not gonna happen in probably a, you know, a ten-minute presentation here, but much more a roundtable discussion with council and, uh, and then all strategizing together. But I, I, I know that you have all of our support to obviously continue to promote because if we're not promoting tourism, then we might as well forget about some of these other projects that we're talking about. So, um, I leave it up to maybe administration if they wanna throw some comments in or whether or not that's enough to kinda take it forward for you guys' next steps to bring something out back.
Yeah, um, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, administration has obviously listened to the conversation and the presentation with great interest and I'm certain that Mike and his team will be prepared to consider it and, and continue that conversation with council and with the other stakeholders.
Perfect. Thank you for the presentation this evening. There's no other questions, so I guess you are free to step down and.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Counsel, we will take a, uh, a five, no, maybe a ten-minute break. Everybody will yell at me if I say a five-minute break. Ten-minute break and we will reconvene maybe at, uh, six forty-two and a half. Okay, we are back live, Cochrane Council, and so we are going on to the business part of our agenda, which is 5A, the Q1 financial report. And I'd like to ask Ms. Gallant to come forward to present item 5A. And I hope I got your name right. Perfect.
I'm not known for my patience. Should I click it again?
It's like today's traffic. Just joking.
This further adds to, I'm not as entertaining as the professional actors behind me, but I'll do my best tonight, counsel, so. Good evening. Feels like just a few weeks ago, and in fact, a few weeks ago, I was here presenting the final results for 2021. Tonight, we're here to talk about the first quarter results for 2022. In December, council approved an operational budget of $68.2 million, of which, as of the first, end of the first quarter, 23.5% had been spent. In addition to our operational budget, council approved a capital budget of $29.2 million. And during the first quarter, council resolutions added $5 million to the capital budget, bringing us to a total capital budget of $34.7 million. So going into 2022, we have 89 capital projects underway. Digging a little bit more into the results and the revenue trends for 2022. As of March 31st, total revenues collected from tax and rate-supported departments were $8.3 million, of which $4.1 million was generated from utility departments, and $4.2 million was generated from tax-supported departments. In review of the first quarter results, a few trends were noted. There continues to be more and more residents moving to Cochrane, which is having a positive impact on town revenues for utilities, permits, and fees. Planning subdivisions approved in first quarter were significantly higher than anticipated. In the first quarter, $129,000 in subdivision endorsement fees were collected, to which the budget was $15,000 for those fees. So we're trending high. In speaking with planning, this is likely all the subdivisions that will be approved in 2022, so this trend is not expected to continue. Penalty revenue is also up, but is consistent as a percentage of the amounts spilled. Tax penalties are levied in January and July. Therefore, penalties are trending higher just due to timing. Utility penalties are levied monthly and are consistent month over month. Revenue is not received equally throughout the year, so there are some revenue timing differences showing up in some departments. For instance, animal licensing was budgeted to be $145,000, and by the end of the first quarter, 95% of that had been collected due to the timing. Conversely, business licenses are collected in the last quarter, so we expect the revenue results to come in at that time. Regardless, administration continues to monitor any variances in the revenues collected as the year progresses. Moving on to cost trends. As of March 31st, the total costs incurred by the tax and rate-supported departments was $15.4 million. $3.5 million pertained to the operational costs for the utility departments, and $12 million of operational costs were incurred by the tax-supported departments. Upon further analysis, there were a few trends related to the overall first-quarter costs, which led to costs coming in under budget. Departments continue to see unsustainable cost savings in their staffing lines. Recruitments are underway to fill these vacancies, and as well, there are newly approved positions that are being actively recruited. Supply chain issues and manufacturing delays continue to impact all town departments as well as capital projects. On the converse side, credit card fees are up as more residents are utilizing online payment options for their town services and fees. Overall, expenses are trending at 25% for the first quarter, and as with revenues, we will continue to monitor any variances as the year progresses. Moving on to capital projects, the first quarter saw $5.2 million spent on capital projects, with 82% of that being spent on the station and the new protective services buildings. Fire services spent $409,000 on capital projects, and Center Avenue Highway 1A spent $240,000 during the first quarter. Inflation and supply chain issues will continue to play a significant role in costs for capital as well in 2022. If anyone wants to take a quick drive around the town, it shows that the spring/summer construction season is well underway in Q2, so we expect to see an uptick in the costs incurred for capital in the second quarter. Thank you for listening to my presentation. That brings us to the end.
Thank you for the information. And Counselor Reed, you're up first.
All righty. Just, I was curious about, it was, some departments have a large spend to date. The main reason for this is the revenue is budgeted annually. I was wondering if, based on previous budget, is there any way of being able to address that in uniformity in terms of throughout the year, in terms of revenue, so that the quarterly variances aren't so skewed?
Through the chair to Counselor Reed. Did you want to take this one?
You want to do it.
Without knowing the specifics of which maybe line items or departments you're looking into, there's much work that's happened throughout the year, and thanks to my team to put in sort of contributions, let's say, to reserves to sort of smooth those costs. Did you have anything you maybe wanted to add, Ms. Bencon Pena?
Yeah, thank you. We could budget on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis, but then what happens is there's the question of how does this match the budget document? So the Town of Cochrane has historically and continues to budget annually, pardon me, and then show the variance to the annual budget. And so you can, you would have to pick a way that you want to do it. Either you would like to show the annual budget so that it matches what you've approved for the annual budget, and then you show the variance. And at the end of Q1, you would expect 25%. And then report, as Ms. Gallon had done, which is to say there are certain revenues that are once-a-year revenues, so that's why there's a timing difference. The alternative is to budget the revenue in the months or the quarters that we normally would see them, report on that, in addition to the annual budget.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I'm used to the second, just in terms of my own kind of career experience, right? So in, like, currently, the nonprofit that I run, we know funds are coming in at certain times of the year, and so we've actually budgeted that way, so we don't get into this with our board, or in this case, council, being, not understanding why the quarterly numbers are so skewed, right? But that's just a comment, and I'm not suggesting that we change otherwise, just, which is curious. The other one I had was, Catherine's cough, it said efforts are underway to fill vacancies as these savings are not sustainable given the town's growth. Can you clarify what that means? Is it, is that we're having trouble filling vacancies? And that, because we're not filling those vacancies, that's not sustainable? Or, I'm not, I'm just curious what that line actually is trying to say.
I can take that too, if you'd like. So we have staff leaving, and there's, it takes a period of time to fill those positions, and we've had a number of positions become vacant. So not only are we trying to recruit for the new positions, we are also at the same time trying to recruit for vacancies. And while those positions are open, that's causing a decrease in the salary costs. However, it's increasing the workload on the staff who are remaining, hence the comment that it's not sustainable.
Okay, so the savings are okay. It's, okay, got it. Thank you. Thanks for your report.
Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, thank you very much. It's nice to see that we're a quarter of the way through, and we've a quarter of the way of the budget. Seems to be in alignment. I just wanted to ask if there's any, like, red flags that you're seeing, and if anybody could expand on the supply chain and manufacturer delays. I'm more curious to see if we're expecting they're going to see increased costs with those, or if we're going to see any significant impact on the timing of some of our projects.
Through the chair to Counselor McFadden, if there's anything we learned maybe in 2021 is that it's very hard to forecast in this current environment what inflation looks like. Many of the delays we're seeing are for our capital projects, which don't start January 1st and end December 31st, so it just means that maybe where we had it budgeted for capital costs in 2022, it may carry over just due to some delays in obtaining equipment or supplies into 2023. So it's a way of sort of explaining that the capital costs that came in in Q1 are light, but we do expect them to sort of ramp up a bit as the construction season starts, also as we start to see some of those capital items that were ordered start to come in and pay the invoices for them as well, so.
All right, thank you.
I only have one question for you, and I believe that I asked this during the budget process. When it comes to credit card fees, that comes to a cost of the municipality, not to the user? And are we looking at ways to possibly take that and put that fee into the hands of the user rather than the municipality paying?
For sure. So credit card fees are, of course, always a cost of doing business, and it is a current consideration, seeing the volume of payments that are happening through credit cards. We're looking at a few different alternatives. Could we consider a different option for online payments, but also taking into consideration, should that become part of what we present for the future budget, so?
Yeah, I know there's also some limitations from legislation-wise as to what fees you can charge people when they're using their debit and credit cards. So that's something we certainly would look at. It really wasn't a big consideration before, but as you correctly pointed out, Deputy Mayor, these fees are increasing, so it is an opportunity for us to look at how we are delivering those payment options and what alternatives are available to us.
Perfect, thank you. I mean, and I also understand that, obviously, as we open the downtown center, and maybe we have another option for people to, maybe it's more convenient for them to go downtown and pay their bills directly, maybe that, maybe that stops some of that. But, you know, as we all see, the world is very much, you know, we're online, we want to pay it online, and I think we are going to have to investigate whatever kind of options that we can. And obviously, you pointed out that maybe some things aren't up to our control of what we can charge, but, you know, how can we maybe transition into other ways so that we're not taking on that lump sum, and especially as Cochrane grows? Because that number, the more people, obviously, population grows, that number's only going to grow as to what those fees are looking like. And that's my only comment, and so I don't see anybody else. So thank you very much for the information, and we carry on with, look forward to the next report as you come forward.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to, first of all, invite up Mr. Dericott to come forward to present item 5B, and this is our 2022-2025 strategic plan. He might not be coming to the podium, he's just going to speak from his seat.
Yep, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just going to offer a brief, I guess, preface to the presentation, which Kristen will be delivering here in just a moment. And we're very pleased to have this opportunity to share draft, excuse me, draft Cochrane strategic plan for basically this next council term. It's been administratively a great exercise to hear council talk about their vision, their passion, and their experience living in this community that has helped, I think, shape this document. And we're hopeful that council will see not only their own impressions and priorities for their community reflected, but also what you've heard from the people in our community, your neighbors, businesses, et cetera, that we have interacted with, that inform this plan. Ultimately, this is council's document, and so we offer this to council as a reflection of what we believe to be a representation of the values, priorities, and principles that we think will assist in giving, I've used the language before, of a decision-making framework, both for council at the council table, but also in our administrative processes as we go forward. And with that, I think I'll pause and allow Kristen to run through an overview of the document and how we got here, and then we'll look forward to some dialogue with council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come to you tonight and present the draft 2023 to 2025 Cochrane Strategic Plan. I wanted to start off by talking about what our strategic planning process has looked like over the last few years. The last strategic plan was adopted by council in 2015, and it was a 2015 to 2018 strategic plan. This document provided the organization's values, mission, vision, and guiding principles. Over the last seven years, the strategic plan was used to guide organizational decision-making and was a basis for council strategic priorities. Following the 2017 election, administration continued to follow the guiding principles of the 2015 to 2018 plan, as we worked through updates to other foundational documents, including our land use bylaw. Council developed council strategic priorities in the last term, and these priorities were reviewed and updated annually to ensure that, sorry, were reviewed and updated annually. As the community continued to grow and evolve, a need was developed to determine a long-term vision for our community. This resulted in the Cochrane Community Vision, which was adopted by council in 2019. This vision looked to build community ownership, drive decision-making, and direct investment. Following the recent 2021 election, council participated in a relaunch where you were invited to share your priorities and your vision for the term, and through this, you supported the development of an updated strategic plan as an opportunity to refocus our collective efforts. The outcome is this draft document presented to you tonight. This plan sets a bold vision for Cochrane's future and reflects council's commitment to setting a vision that will become a reality, a vision that sets us on the path to be the most desirable community in all of Canada. The document is based on the five key aspirations identified in the Cochrane Community Vision. Reimagined and reinvigorated. reimagined and reinvigorated with a language recently demonstrated through council. So this includes our identity, open spaces and natural areas, livability, vibrant economy and connectivity. And it's reflected through commitment statements of how we anticipate bringing those aspirations to reality. The community aspirations are set along, are set upon a strong foundational base, supporting them to become this, to become a reality. This foundation is set upon organizational resiliency, an organization that is healthy, responsive, adaptive and progressive, financial and environmental stewardship, where we prioritize long-term planning and a strong financial policy framework, balance saving for the future with paying for the current, ensuring intergenerally, intergenerational equity, a built environment where Cochrane is planning for the future needs of our growing community today, ensuring that our built environment can facilitate the reality of this plan, and intentional relationships with all of our key stakeholders. Our municipal neighbors, indigenous peoples, provincial and federal representatives, local community groups, and to a greater extent, our residents, our business communities, our neighbors, our volunteers and our community drivers. These relationships require intentional connection and honest dialogue through public engagement, community events, two-way communication and active community participation. It's really hard to see, I apologize. What it says on there is this plan allows us to take control of our own destiny, set a clear path for our future and make sure it happens on purpose. So how do we make sure that this vision becomes a reality? A little bit about the planning framework of a strategic plan. The strategic direction of our community is driven by Cochrane Strategic Plan, and this plan is a living document. It drives departmental business plans, the operating and capital budget, community master plans, and is demonstrated through regular measurement and reporting. Progress on the implementation of the strategic plan will be brought back to council regularly and reported to the public through our annual report to the community. Community engagement remains a key priority of council and administration. Prior to adopting the Cochrane Community Vision, which provides a lot of the framework for the strategic plan in 2019, there was a significant public engagement strategy rolled out to ensure we heard from the community about what they wanted to see in the Cochrane of the future. This feedback was presented to council for consideration prior to adopting the vision. The recent 2021 election provided key stakeholders the opportunity to select leaders for Cochrane who could guide the principle-based decision-making for both today and the future. Prior to bringing the strategic plan back to council for formal consideration, key stakeholders will be invited to share their feedback on this draft plan through our Let's Talk platform. The document will also be shared on our website and social media channels to ensure everyone has the opportunity to provide feedback. Our intent would be that we would bring the revised draft or an updated draft, including public comments, back to council in early to mid-June. In summary, Cochrane is at a crossroads. We are evolving as a vibrant and innovative community while looking to preserve our inherent charm. This requires intentional, bold commitments. Preserving our unique identity, protecting, nurturing and enjoying our natural landscape, creating a vibrant and active community with connected neighborhoods, creating an atmosphere where the modern economy can thrive and bringing together people physically and socially. These commitments will be reflected as council sets their priorities, deliberates upcoming budgets and engages with the community. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. And just so, you know, maybe the public kind of understands that is, that this is council's long-term vision. But also with that is how projects or capital projects or even aspirations going forward all tie back into this similar plan so that it's not just a document that we have floating out there and there's really no tie-in. It will all tie back into everything from operational to capital costs and all those things going forward, just so that people have an idea. Counsel Reed, you're up.
So the Deputy Mayor's comment, yeah, for me, this is kind of the North Star, right? Everything else flows out from this. And, and I like this iteration of it. I think we're really getting hounded in on it. I had two comments. Can you flip back to your very first slide? Yeah, that one there, the one at the bottom right. I've always liked that, that kind of vision of ours in terms of the environment and the surrounding community. And I, I don't know how others feel about it, if there's any value in terms of trying to wedge that in here somewhere. But I really like, I really think that speaks to a lot of people, that graphic image. And again, picking up on the trade fair, what, what was the most attractive thing of the trade fair? A map, right? And that map is really valuable, I think, in terms of being able to speak to the environmental aspects of what I think, what I believe the collective vision is of our, of my colleagues. So I just referenced that. And the other one was, is there any value in terms of just saying back to the, one of the prior presentations in terms of Cochrane Tourism? So they had a lot of success on that theme, it's a feeling. I'm wondering if there's any value in, in, like, I don't know if that's dated now or if there's any value in terms of trying to incorporate that? Because it does, in terms of a bold vision and some of the other statements that you've made in the most desirable place, that kind of fits in with it as well. But again, you may have considered that and decided otherwise, but I just, those would be my two comments, so.
Through the chair, thank you for the comments, Counsel Reed. I think that there is an opportunity for us to revitalize and re-energize some of our branding. And so I think there's a great opportunity to look at what that, what we, or consider what that could look like.
Mayor Janong?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for the presentation tonight and the document. It's not the first time we've seen it, obviously. We've been talking about this for a few months now, so it shouldn't be a surprise to any of us around the table. But it, obviously, the first time we're going public with this. So I have a couple of small editorial changes that I would put, put to you maybe later on. We don't have to get into that level of detail tonight. But I guess the one question I was going through in my mind, and you answered in your presentation, but I think it's important for the public to understand, what does this mean? And it's really, it just sets the tone. And what I think has changed for me in the dialogue that we've had with this new old council is that it's not just the same old plan. This is us attempting to think bigger, look further and really understand that we're at that pivotal time, I struggle with that word, in our community's genesis here and that we really need to get a handle on what it is and where, where we're going. So to use Counsel Reed's words, a North Star. This document won't get into the level of detail around this project in particular or this budget number, but it will help guide all of those decisions that, that form all of those decision points. So I'm really happy with where we've landed and how we've gotten there. I think the look and feel of the document is fresh, it's clean, easy to understand. I hope that when a resident or, well, hopefully a resident can pick it up and understand where their council is going. But as an external focus, someone from outside of town looks to maybe put their business here or move here, they can quickly leaf through this and understand where we're headed. And I think this document does a good job in, in kind of showing us that way. And I, I look forward to this continuing to guide us as we get into now, you know, further decision points along the way where we get into a little bit more of the finer details and we can continue to tie it back to this document. So, thank you.
Thank you.
May I just add, Mayor Janong and others, if you do have what I would call grammatical or editorial things that you notice, we certainly would be happy to learn about them. You can just submit that by email or have a conversation with Kristen if there's a misplaced comma or, you know, misspelled word or something like that. We certainly endeavor to catch all of those, but if some have slipped through the net, we'd be happy to learn about them.
Thank you. Counsel Nagel?
So what I'm saying with the process we're beginning here is, in my view, council and administration together are really moving towards being proactive. Everybody here was, as part of the last council, and I really felt the last entire term was a very reactive term. Like, we spent so much time investing in planning for traffic infrastructure, which really was reacting to growth pressures that that council did not create and was just, you know, subject to the, as a result of economic changes and previous council decisions and that sort of thing. And then, of course, with the pandemic, all we did was react to the pandemic for two years. But this, with this document, I'm hoping that this can be part of a shift towards proactively getting ahead of the future of Cochrane instead of just reacting to what, what is, you know, the, the burning fire in front of us. And with that pretext or preamble, I just, I'm curious, after this goes out to the public, the public has the opportunity to comment on the direction, what will the next step be for us to actually put, you know, where the rubber meets the road? How will we actually start creating policies that we know these policies are going to have a 10, 15, 20-year impact in the future of Cochrane?
I can start answering the question, maybe I'll let Mr. Derikott jump in. I think that the value of what you've, what you've talked about, Counsel Nagel, is we really are creating that North Star. And I think organizationally, it allows us to look at how we can align our business plans, our budgets and bring those pieces forward for council's consideration and really start to drive investment in the areas where council is looking to see that investment take place. I'm not sure if Mr. Derikott would want to add to that.
Yeah, no, you know, thank you. I, I think I'll just build on what Ms. Huberke was sharing. And you, you know, as soon as this is adopted by resolution, this becomes administration's main guide to what we do, not only on a day-to-day basis, but also in program and policy development, the creation of the upcoming budget. For example, it would be my expectation that council would be able to connect this document to pieces that are placed in front of them for consideration in not only the budget, but other significant policy documents. And so we can see how that will assist administration. There's such an enormous breadth of potential activities that this will allow us to start to key in on those that support the ethics and the values and the principles that are described in this document. And, and beyond that as well, I do think there comes a time where there is action-oriented pieces that are added underneath of this that start to show, hey, so for example, we commit to, for, I'm just picking one at random. And you know, environmental stewardship, for example, is a kind of piece that we could start to say, hey, here's the three or four actual tangible exercises that we're undertaking that we believe support this commitment. And so that's what the next stage, I think, looks like in terms of the planning process. But I'm hopeful that it will have immediate impacts on the decision-making, both at this table, but as well in the administrative processes.
So, so will, like, so like, I, I think that there's going to be unanimous agreement from council and from the community. We want more green space, for example. So then will there be a touch point where we have a meeting and say, hey, remember we set that high-level strategic objective to have more parks and green spaces in Cochrane? Well, this is what we're going to do about it. Are, like, are we going to do something that concrete in response to it?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think that this will also be our report card to ourselves is right, at least annually, council will sit down and look at this document and say, are the things we're doing actually lining up with these priorities? Do these priorities and principles still, are they still the most important ones to us? And I think that's where we'll start to be able to demonstrate. Council said green spaces was really important. And so over the last 12 months or whatever the period of time, we did this, this and this, that, supported that. And we're planning to do this, this and this to continue that good work. And I think you'll start to see how those can, they, they can line up. And much of this is already evident in the work that's being done. As Kristen mentioned in the presentation, this is, we believe, an extension of the really great work that was done to create the community vision, for example. And so some of these pieces are already underway. And we just, I think it's about connecting the allocation of resources, time, effort, which we know are finite, to ensure that they're leveraged in, in the most responsible and most effective way possible.
And then I guess to do my own part, I will try to come up with proposals and notices of motion, working in partnership with council and administration that are reflective of what we're talking about here, what the community agrees with here, as opposed to things that would derail us or distract us from that. But, yeah, anyways, that's it. Thanks.
Counsel McFadden?
Yeah, thank you. Counsel Nagel, I really appreciate, I think you summed it up well, that a large portion of our, of the first council that we all served in was very reactionary crisis management. And it really took away that space to, to look ahead and plan and establish a vision. And this is getting us back to that, and that's really what makes me excited about it. And, and as you said, you know, this way, I think both administration and council can kind of commit to championing and making projects move ahead that kind of stick within the tracks that we've outlined here. So a lot of strengths here, and I really appreciate how you outlined that. One of the, as we take this out to the public, I can see perhaps one of the questions might be, you know, this is nice visionary statements you have, but how does this actually translate into getting stuff, stuff done? And I really appreciated, in one of your slides, you had how this sat over a number of them. This, the planning framework. And I wondered if there might be a way to incorporate that into, into this document in some way so that people can really help us translate that, this vision statement? Because it's, it's said in the words, but just in that actual picture way to be able to translate it and say that from this, these visions will feed into how we make these decisions. And that would just be my suggestion, if we could find a way to maybe incorporate that, that image into the document. But I, I think it's a great step for council and, and our team, and I'm glad we're taking it. So thank you. Thank you.
If I may jump in there as well, I think, thank you Counsel McFadden. I, I would just add to those comments as well that in the way we communicate this to the public is that this is a long-term, we're talking in years, right? And even multiple years to make progress on some of these pieces. But what we want to be able to do is start to connect the activities to the outcomes and to demonstrate how we're moving the organization and the community towards these, these ideals. And so I think that that's part of the process that we'll undertake as well is to give those frames of reference in terms of what people can see inside given kind of timeframes annually over the course of this term and beyond. Because I think all of those timeframes are relevant to this exercise as well. And it looks a little different when you kind of go into each of those spaces. What does it look like over the next year? What does it look like over this term? And then, you know, Counsel Nagel rightly identified, we hope this has an impact. We expect this to have an impact even in the 10, 15, 20-year timeframes. And so each of those timeframes, the connectivity looks a little bit differently. If we do this really, really well, I think the important thing is you can see that they're all connected to that same plan.
Counsel Wilson?
Thank you. I, I have concerns about the document that are similar to Counselor Nagel and McFadden. They just mentioned that, maybe more intensely however, just that it's, it feels like it's full of buzzwords and nice sounding language, but lacks any substance or definition. I've been assured that this is a, you know, the top of the planning hierarchy document and more detail and definition will come in as we continue down the planning hierarchy. And so I'll reserve my judgment for that. It could just simply reflect my impatience in the planning process and might say more about me than the document. It frustrates me that it's not more defined and it just seems so devoid of any specifics that, that I'm not sure on its value. But I'll, I'll reserve my judgment. I'll, I'd like to hear what Let's Talk Cochrane has to say if other people out there agree that, with what I'm saying or if I'm on my own there. And then also, as we go, we'll see, hopefully this does connect to more tangible things and I'm wrong. And this is just simply the top layer of our getting, getting to business as a council and administration for our term here. And this ends up being more useful than I fear it may, may or may not be. Just a comment, I don't have any questions, but thank you. And thank you for all your hard work on it. It looks great, by the way. Kristen, I don't mean to blast our team, this is a very good-looking document, I think.
I will give all the credit to Ms. Turville for that, for my team. Yep.
Counsel Flowers?
Yes, thank you for your presentation. I felt that you really captured our vision. It's a hard thing to capture in all the discussions and the pre-work that we did leading up to this. The language that's used in it, the history that's shown, relationship building. It's all the kind of things that we discuss and that we found are really important to us. And the grandfather tree's in there, which is awesome. There's exciting times ahead for Cochrane as we grow and change. And I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what feedback we do get from the public on this and whether they understand where it's going. So looking forward to the next steps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mayor Janong, I almost missed you.
We do that to the chair at times, just randomly put lights on. I just thought I'd build on what Counsel Wilson was talking about, the overarching document. And I, I agree with your sentiment, but I also think that you nailed it, that that is what this document is supposed to be. And I, I fear that maybe people in the public would look to this document to highlight specifics. And it's not the nature of what we're trying to design here. I think from my perspective, we would build a project list from this, but not in it. The 10-year capital plan would be reflective of this and budgets would be reflective of this. And then those capital and operational budgets, like we saw Q1 report tonight, would steep out of this document. So that, that's kind of how I see it flow. But maybe building on what So that, that's kind of how I see it flow, but maybe building on what Counselor McFadden was saying, like, maybe we need to say that in here so that we're, we're very deliberate in not asking for feedback that really we're not intending to get, like. And if this document is going to be the document that everyone wants, like, the catch-all for everything, I, then we're likely not going to get very good feedback for it, because it's really just a, like we've been saying, a North Star, so.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think that is the question, is, is, when you read this, does this feel like the kind of Cochrane that you want to live in and you want to be a part of in, in, in a principal sense and a value sense? And, and certainly there, even underneath each of those realities, there's just so many activities or strategies or tactics is maybe the better word, the strategy being up here, then we start talking about tactics, and there's just multiple tactics that can be employed. And I'll say, from the administrative perspective, is once we have a really good idea of what the North Star is for our community and organization, we have an incredible team of dedicated, talented, creative, you know, administrative staff who can then go out and find the best possible outcomes. And, and that's how I, when council expresses their excitement on this side of the table, for me anyway, it becomes really, really clear what our objectives are, and we can start to ensure that we are pushing all of the activities through this lens. And that's a much better exercise than trying to guess or, or working in an ambiguous situation. And I think that we're going to see an energy come into the organization, and I hope the community, as a result of the clarity that council has provided here.
Counselor McFadden?
Yeah, I'm glad we got a chance to, like, flesh it out a little bit. And like, one of the things I think we should make clear in the, in the communications and in the engagement, like, this is, this is like a four-beer plan, right? And I know that it says it, '22 to '25, but we might need to reiterate that this is a vision that we're trying to, this is the vision that's going to guide our activities through those years. It might get a little bit lost that this is, this isn't a, you know, the, the MDP or some higher-level vision, that this is a strategic plan for those years. So we might just need to be a little bit clearer in that, just some thoughts. But anyhow, I, overall, I think it's a great first step. Thank you.
Just a couple of comments. You know, when we were at the trade show, one of the exciting things was, is kind of what that little bubble said that we couldn't all see up there, but just that Cochrane plans to do more purposeful development, and I think that's a very big comment that needs to be given out to our communities so that, you know, we, we see the social media rants and complaints about, you know, talking about development overall and how, you know, we just don't want people to come here or live here. But I think there's a very big difference between just opening up the floodgates and, and then creating purposeful development about what we want to see, what kind of businesses we want, what kind of feel we want, and tying that all back in. And I think that's a very key statement that people need to understand. That is this council's focus overall, and we're all in favor of that together as a team. I'm looking forward to hearing, kind of like what Counselor Flowers said, I'm looking forward to hearing some of those comments from the stakeholders. I think that will be very important. I've got notes all over the place here. And then, when it comes back to what Counselor Nagel was saying, so he was kind of talking about those next steps, so we're gonna do engagement. You know, what, what does that engagement period look like? I imagine that engagement will come back to Cochrane Council, we'll review that engagement. But then, like, does this obviously come into a council meeting at some point, we're going to, to pass this? And, you know, and then what kind of timeframe do people have to be able to give input? And I think that's somewhat of what he was kind of going out, maybe, maybe not.
Thanks for the question, Deputy Mayor Fadeko. So our plan right now would be to give two to three weeks for engagement opportunity and then bring this back to council for formal consideration in mid-June. Depending on if that meets council's desire, we could look to, we could look to modify that, but that was what we were looking at right now.
And then when it comes to this planning framework, maybe, and I don't know what council thinks about this, but I'm just gonna throw it out there, but like, you know, you talk about your community master plans, but maybe it would almost be like smaller bubbles underneath that people could tie in some of those plans that we, that already exist, right? And then start to kind of put them underneath the bubbles in smaller sections so that they, we all understand this is an overall arching kind of guiding principle, but then underneath those things, maybe they could kind of relate, oh, that's where that plan now fits into this. I, I don't know how you feel about that, but that might just be a suggestion as well. And, and I think, you know, so much, so many times, you know, when we, when we look at where we are now, it's, it's not that Cochrane has just done a real poor job of development and things like that, but in reality, people don't realize, like, developments and subdivisions and communities, they, they start years and years and years and years ago. And so, you know, with that also becomes the pressure of, you know, when their first, you know, they first come on stream in 2000, you know, or 1999 or 1985, you know, people had two cars, right? And there was a very different dynamic of families and what people were looking for, and all of a sudden, you know, it's not like you can stop those plans now and then say, oh, well, you know, we just aren't gonna have you carry on. I mean, it's, it's, that makes it difficult from a planning perspective, because now people that went from two cars have five cars, and where do they all put their cars, right? And just, you know, different things that people want to see, different activities, different recreational opportunities. I just, I think it's a bigger conversation that people have to realize that that, those things happen years and decades before they kind of become what people see today, right? So sometimes people have to maybe have a little patience, but I think that this looks really great, how we kind of proceed from there. I think we'll come from our stakeholder comments and our, and then from stuff around council as we continue to chat this through. That's all my comments for now, but Counselor Reed?
Yeah, actually, something you said prompted me to ask a more question. So I guess my life experiences have been such that this is, I'm comfortable with this in terms of an overall North Star document, and then everything else drills down to it. And, and I know, I appreciate that everybody said that life experience, and so I'm, I'm respectful of others' comments. I'm just wondering if, if, if people are hung up on the word "plan," maybe, could you, could, could you say "strategic vision" as opposed to "strategic plan"? Because really, this is a vision of the future, right? And, and it doesn't, when people think of the word "plan," they, they want to get into the nitty-gritty, right? And I, I don't know that, I don't know that the, ours, I'm not trying to be critical, but I mean, I don't know if people have had enough life experiences to be able to recognize that this isn't really a detailed plan, right? This is more of a visionary document, like I said, the North Star, and again, that's the kind of experience that I, and the world I come from, but not everybody's had that life experiences, so. I'm, just, just a thought, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm not wedded to it, I'm just kind of short.
I don't know, Kristen, if you have any thoughts on that?
No, I, I think I'm open to that, Counselor Reed. I think strategic plan is a very common phrase in municipal government, and it is something, it is very a visionary document that municipalities put together. I think that this is a shift for Cochrane. I think that our strategic plan of the past was very, a little bit more drilled in, right? A little bit into the details, and this is setting a vision. So it feels different, I think, for council and administration, but I think that leaves a lot of opportunity to start to work through what that actually looks like. In terms of the language, I think I'm open to either, either way.
Yeah. I, I think, to add to that, I, I appreciate the sentiment, Counselor Reed, and I think I agree with what you're suggesting. There's, like, I can see both sides, is people come looking for your strategic plan, and if you call it something different, then maybe, you know, it's not as apparent to them where they're, what they're looking for, and I don't want to oversimplify that, but I think the real basis is the truth is, is we're setting a trajectory, right? We're setting an objective and a target, and there's a whole journey in between there, and there's hills and valleys and all kinds of navigation that happens in between there. But we're kind of putting, you know, pointing the good ship, Cochrane, in that direction. And, and I think that that's really what the purpose of this document is, and we'll certainly work to communicate that and, and appreciate it. It's gratifying to hear that, I think council has a really good appreciation for what that tool is meant to be. And so in your communication, when you're out and interacting with people, I think that will be really helpful to support that. And there will become, you know, other tools that I think flesh out and fill in some of those other parts of the conversation. But I meant, I meant to mention this earlier, and so I'm just going back after I, one of the comments, I don't remember which one reminded me, that I think one of the key outcomes of this tool is accountability. So it's, it's accountability for council to the community, right? We're accountable. We've said this is our objective, and three years from now, when, I know, you know, an election comes around and you want to evaluate whether or not you think we've done a good job, I hope you'll look at this kind of document and say, hey, did council deliver on the things that they said they were gonna deliver on? There's an accountability for, I think, council internally, when you can say to each other, hey, I think that's really great, but I'm not sure it aligns with our strategic vision or plan that we held up. And there's an accountability council to administration, where council can, I, I think that's really, it does happen two-way, where sometimes administration is reminding council, say, hey, you told us this is what you wanted, so we delivered something along these lines and, along these commitments, and vice versa. Council can, I, I think, reflect that accountability to administration as well. And so I'm hopeful this is something that we will all accept that accountability towards. I think Counselor Nagel made a pretty strong statement about that, which I really appreciated, and that to me is what I intend to come away from this with. In part is that council can ask me, as, you know, your senior official, how did you help us move closer to this reality? And that being a core accountability that's associated with this. And internally, we can have those same conversations, whoops, excuse me, or same conversations with our, with our teams as part of this process as well.
All right. Well, with that, it doesn't look like there are any more comments, so we, I'm sure that all of council will be anxiously awaiting some of the comments that are gonna come forward, and we continue on to the next steps of our strategic plans, strategic visions, strategic whatever it becomes, but it all sounds really good on our end.
Thank you.
And we, for the first time, have no in-camera session tonight, so I guess I can call the meeting adjourned at 7:29.